Let's just try and see if she's ready. Ms. Amanda, we good? Good morning. We now call this council meeting to order. We ask that if you have a cellphone, if you would put it on mute, silent or off at this time. Also, if you were going to address the council, we ask that you would sign your name and your address at the signing sheet at the podium. At this time, we'll be led in prayer by Madam Clerk, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Madam Clerk?
O God of might, wisdom and justice, through whom authority is rightly administered, laws enacted and judgment decreed, assist us, we beseech thee, that this city council may be conducted in righteousness and be eminently useful to thy people over whom we reside, preside. Amen.
Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams? Morgan?
Present.
West?
Present.
Roots?
Present.
Mayor Kirkland?
Present. Move for the approval, approval of minutes?
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes. Now open up the microphone for public comments on action items only, the resolutions. If you have public comment, we ask that you would go to the podium, state your public comments at this time. You're in the same none? Madam Clerk?
Resolution. Whereas the City of Chester has commenced a public improvement project for the reconstruction of the Lloyd Street Bridge. And whereas, the project requires the acquisition of certain real property, identified as West Fifth Street, Folio number four nine dash zero eight dash zero zero two seven six dash zero zero. And whereas, the property is currently listed on the Delaware County Tax Claim Bureau repository list. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the proper city official to submit the repository bidder application slash bid form to the Delaware County Tax Claim Bureau for the purchase of West Fifth Street, Folio number four nine dash zero eight dash zero zero two seven six dash zero zero. And an amount not to exceed six hundred dollars as a part of the reconstruction of the Lloyd Street Bridge project. Further, it does hereby authorize the proper city official to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the purchase of the above property for and on behalf of the City of Chester. So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. Whereas, by resolution dated June twenty second nineteen ninety five, the Council of the City of Chester authorized the dissolution of the Chester Redevelopment Authority. And whereas, upon the dissolution of the Chester Redevelopment Authority, control of all real property titled to Chester Redevelopment Authority passed to the City of Chester. And whereas, the City of Chester owns real property in the one hundred block of Hayes Street. And whereas, the City of Chester wishes to return the following real property to productive use. One oh two Hayes Street, titled to former Chester Redevelopment Authority. One oh six Hayes Street, titled to City of Chester. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the transfer of one oh two Hayes Street and one oh six Hayes Street to the new Redevelopment Authority of the City of Chester for redevelopment purposes. So moved.
Second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. Whereas, the City of Chester provides a variety of services for the residents of the city. And whereas, the city has determined it is necessary to collect certain fees for rendering said services. And whereas, the fees collect offset the expenses incurred by the city relating to such services. And whereas, such fees must stay current to effectively cover the related expenses. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby adopt the attached twenty twenty two City of Chester Bureau of Fire Fee Schedule for fire inspections and fire permits. Further, that all fees are to be collected at the time of application. Further, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage. So moved.
Second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does approve an order payment of a series of bills and refunds as prepared by the Department of Accounts and Finance and is shown on expenditure approval list dated February tenth twenty twenty three, attached here to, and made a part here of, subject to approval from the Department of Accounts and Finance. So moved.
Second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West? Roots?
No.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Ms. Carter, Ms. King, you have a COVID presentation.
Good morning, Honorable Mayor Thaddeus Kirkland, fellow council members as well as members of the community. I stand on behalf of the COVID Committee, along with myself and COVID Specialist, Ms. King. And I do have an update for you for February twenty second. The Pennsylvania Department of Health reported fifty seven positive COVID nineteen cases in Chester in February. Research experts believe the number of positive cases is undercounted due to at-home testing and residents who may have mild symptoms that do not get tested. Just want to remind our fellow constituents that we do have free COVID home testing downstairs on our table. The CDC states that people in Delaware County may choose to mask anytime due to medium level of COVID nineteen transmission. You can go to vaccine dove, vaccine dot dove for the most up-to-date appointment availability for vaccines and boosters. We encourage everyone to consider getting the vaccine and booster shot if you haven't already. The Health Department, Health Department is partnering with the Franklin Lodge and Woodland Pharmacy to sponsor Vaccine Booster and Flu Shot Clinic on March first from eleven to one. And the Franklin Lodge is located at twenty eight fifteen West Third Street. Additionally, the city will host their first annual Women's Health Conference on March eleventh from nine AM to one PM at Wyner University. I'd just like to say to everyone, it's going to be a great conference. We're going to be looking at health issues, not only for women, as well as for men, and the conference is free. The keynote speaker will be radio host and stroke survivor Patty Jackson. If anyone is interested, please have, we have flyers downstairs on the table that may include, that, that does include the registration link. Finally, the City of Chester offer free blood pressure screening every Wednesday from eleven AM to one PM in the lobby. So we like to encourage employees as well as visitors when you come in. If you're here between eleven and one PM, please get your blood pressure taken. Because many times, as you probably heard, strokes are a silent killer, okay? And many times, people don't know their, their numbers. So again, this service is being provided by Wyner University School of Nursing. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Carter, and thank you, Ms. King, for all of your information providing, for providing us with all the information concerning COVID. Is there anyone else that would like to sign the signing sheet before we proceed? Ms. Littleton? And I just wanted to remind everyone that we have a three-minute limit, and we ask that you would adhere to that.
Good morning, Mayor Council.
Morning.
Ms. Littleton, I'm just going to ask my series of questions in hopes that I can get them all answered. My first question is a repeat from the last meeting. Just want the council to answer to the fact as they look around this room and consider that there are lots of empty seats the time at which you're having these council meetings. If it's any concern to you that the constituents of Chester City is not here, and maybe it could be because of the fact that we've mentioned before, that we really never got a clear answer to from this council. So just wanted to know if this was a concern to you, that this room is empty like it is? And my next question is, what does it mean when the city gives a company here in Chester City, the keys to the city? I know that I was at the last meeting and the stadium got the keys. Can you just explain what that entails, what that means? How, how does a company receive the keys, what's entailed in having the keys to Chester City? Also, wanted to do a follow-up on the status of the assessment for slowing down traffic on Ninth Street, in particular, three hundred block where there's two schools that reside. I know that there was supposed to be conversations with Penn Dot about that. Just wanted to see if there was any follow-up on that. And also, in the entire time that the city has been actively working on the illegal dumping in the city, I know that we just had a recent article where we had found someone that was guilty and prosecuted and arrested. I just want to know, at the beginning of your initiative in this process of trying to deal with this, is there any data on how many others have been, you know, caught and possibly prosecuted for this? And roundabout number of people that we have captured illegally dumping here in Chester City? And then, again, what are some of the other plans that are, that are still in process to continue to work on that situation, being that we still have a lot of wider areas that have a lot of illegal dumping that's still going on? Okay, and I just want to ask, ask this council, and you, you might have already talked about this, but something that you can maybe share to myself and the residents. You know, we are currently under receivership and we're currently undergoing bankruptcy. Can the council speak to the fact of if there's anything, or your strategies or plans that you guys work together on trying to prevent this? And, you know, was it something that could have been prevented? And, you know, if, you know, and if you think you've done everything, or, or this receiver should not be here, or us filing for bankruptcy, is this just a mistake? And do you agree with this process? Or can you speak to us of why this is happening and what roles that you play to try to prevent this? Or your plans in future as we move through this process? Thank you. That's the end of my questions.
Thank you, Ms. Littleton. I will ask, let me see if we can go through them real quickly. We do have nightly meetings, Ms. Littleton. We also, since we've been going live, Zoom, virtual, a lot of folks choose to stay home and watch the proceedings on TV. And we have been actually going into the communities. I've been going into the communities to have community meetings. So it's not the fact that there are not a lot of persons here. Do the same things in the churches, in the church settings. A lot of churches, many of members, members choose to stay home and watch the services on Zoom. As far as the stadium receiving a key to the city, we try to provide keys to the city to those partners who have gone above and beyond the call of duty when it comes to partnering, helping the city. We give it, and, and our citizens, such as Coach Bell for the football team, who has worked diligently with our young men and our young ladies at the high school. To Lil Beats, who has come to Chester and see down the street, provide us with a sneaker store and job opportunities for our young people. And so, we don't really give them out willy-nilly, but to those businesses and individuals who step up to the plate and help in a major way here in the city. They're, they got, they have the keys because they have been a great partner with the city. They have the keys because they've invested another fifteen million dollars in the city, which will, which will create job and career opportunities for our young and old persons here in the city. And they're helping to beautify our waterfront. As far as Ninth Street, Mr. Galante is not here.
I was going to, I'll have to get with our engineer, Mr. Galante, to see if there's, if he has any updates. And I will call you. I have your number. And then, also with the illegal dumping, we don't, I don't have any additional data, but I will get some, and I will, you know, I'll follow up with you.
As far as the process for illegal dumping, we have cameras in place. We are, and I'm going to ask the Commissioner or Speaker. We have cameras in place and we are, I am joining with Mr. Galante. We're going to, we have some more cameras that we're going to put up, so that we make sure that we have, we have them in areas where there's a lot of illegal dumping going on currently. So we're preparing to put more cameras up.
And the mayor and I have been researching this, and we did a drive-through a few times through the city to address those out-of-the-way areas where there's illegal dumpings. Because those illegal dump sites are jumping up all over the place, you know? And so we are researching that and talking about how we're going to address it.
Commis?
In reference to the legal dumping, we meet once a week. We go for about two to three hours, L and I, myself, the District Attorney's Office. Melissa Murrow, who is assigned to the District Attorney's Office, she coordinates with us. It's more of a surprise attack where we move our cameras. We currently have one individual arrested and then the second individual that we were able to identify. So so far, there's two. I'm going to meet with the judges this week, along with Melissa Murrow, and we're going to do some PR stuff in reference to finding out whether they're being criminally charged or fined, which I'll be able to give you the information. We, and also, also, also what I did was, in police work, the City of Chester has broken down to patrol sectors. There's twenty-one through twenty-eight. I created a, a legal dumping log, so we're going to have the inspectors and L and I go to each area and do spot checks through the week. So you checked, just use Ninth and Corona, you checked there Monday, nothing. You checked there Tuesday. You checked there Wednesday. Now there's dumping there Wednesday. We have LPRs, and we can do tag readers too, and we can identify through there. All right, you're welcome.
And Ms. Littleton, in regards to your last question about bankruptcy, I think you asked if it could have been prevented. I would say most certainly, it definitely could have been prevented. I think there, now I know that there were a few areas that the city could have taken in different partnerships and conversations that could have happened over the years and through the years, could have been invented, most certainly. When you talk about, to test the water authority, when you talk about Delkor, you talk about different administrations, you're talking about our financial, structural deficit that we have with the pensioners and retirees, things that may have, could have been worked out to alleviate some of the, the bleeding that has gone on here, or the cloud that has been hovering over the City of Chester for over twenty years. Most certainly, it could have been prevented. And I know that there are things that are happening now and things that can still happen to pretty much turn a city, a city around. Now, I'm hoping that it can happen very soon and swiftly, so that we can do what we need to do here for the City of Chester, for the residents and the businesses here. But yes, it could have been prevented. So I'll give you a few specifics, but obviously, it's financial. So some of the things that this administration, administration that, that predates me had done, there was a, a contract, but pretty much there was a lot of spiking in overtime. Yeah, overtime was very, very high in many departments. And there was actual overtime that was almost like a twenty-four-hour overtime detail, which really was crippling the city in certain, in certain years throughout that. So we were able to negotiate contracts to get, really limit that. We were able to, and I said this many a times, to move quite a bit of retirees that were eligible to be moved over to, from our active medical plan, the PPO type of plan, to a Medicare Supplement Plan, which has saved the city millions of dollars on an annual basis. And we've changed our active employee's healthcare plan from a fully insured plan to a self-insured plan. And that has been helpful as well. So that's just a few things. Again, healthcare, overtime were, were some of the major points that were really having an effect on the city. And also, the, the ordinances and calculations of those pensions as well were having an issue within the city as well. So, so those are some of the things that has been talked about, that has been adjusted over the years. Still more work to be done, though.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm still puzzled about the expenditure list and Mr. Roots, Councilman Roots, excuse me, voting no on that. I remember the last meeting, he indicated that he did not receive it in a timely manner, and then it was said that everybody did receive theirs at a particular point in time. So is that still the issue, Councilman Roots, for the no vote on the expenditure list?
With regard to the last meeting, I stand corrected. The list was in the email. I missed it. With regard to today, because of the point that was brought up last time, and the fact that even if the report is two days ahead of time, five days, seven days, it would take a long time to go through each and every one of those items. I really will stand firm and say, I don't, I don't feel it's my responsibility as a councilman to confirm that all these payments are accurate. There's nothing on these lists that show if they've been paid, that they're pending, that they're even paid for out of the right account. But in lieu of that, between last week or last council meeting and this one, I sent a letter to mayor and council that I would approve this, this list if I could get a verified note from a finance director, our receiver, or our controller, that everything is in check, that everything has been verified. I did not receive that prior to this meeting. So because of the fact that I'm not going to go through, let me show it to you, because you guys don't see it down there. It's very small print, but saying no might be a bit much. I will agree. Because there are some things in here that are definitely legit, like electric bills, phone bills, things that are ongoing expenses. If I continue not to receive a letter to approve or to at least verify that all these are correct, I will probably just go through the list and abstain or, you know, identify the ones that I think definitely need further looking into. But because of the fact that this individual, and I've attempted in the past, even after saying yes to these reports, to verify some of the things that I found in question, I never got the backup verification. So I think that brings us up to today. The reason I voted no is because I didn't get a letter confirming that, you know, these are all legit. They probably are. They may not be. As I said about a year ago at this council meeting, I'm trusting that the finance department has done all the checks and balances, but as the year went on, there has been some activity that, that I know I voted for that I probably shouldn't have. So, I mean, if I can clearly identify some of these ahead of time, I'll call them out. But it's a lot easier, a lot simpler to just give you a blanket no. Unless someone can give me a letter before these meetings to say, you're good to go, rubber stamped. Everything is fine on this list. To put that burden on me to go through, I guess in this case, six and a half pages of fine print, every expense, I won't do it. I don't, I don't have the tools to do it. But again, I'll say that I'm sure the vast majority of these, because they are very basic checks that we pay to our vendors, our electricians, our plumbers, our electric companies, our phone companies, our cable companies. You know, just by glancing at them, common sense would say some of these are legit. But then there are several others every month. Being a new guy on town, I don't know every company that's represented here. I don't know if the amounts are correct. I don't know if these are monthly, quarterly. I've asked simple questions like the payment that we send to the Solid Waste Authority. Like what's it based on? Tonnage? Is it an annual? Is it a monthly? Sometimes it shows up on a expenditure report, and sometimes it doesn't. So I, I just have so many questions that just can't be, that I will not answer, because I just don't have the tools. And the few times that I have asked, I've gotten no results. Is that clear?
No, it's not really clear.
It's not clear. I can't be any clearer than
Well, I'm saying, you asked me, but it's not clear.
Okay, sorry, it's not clear, but that's why I vote no.
Okay, so you expressed that. So I'm just, I'm just wondering, because I know that council persons meet prior to go through the expenditure lists and, and other information that they need to do before they come here. And I thought that it was a process in place, based on what I heard last week, that things, of checks goes through the finance and goes through receiver, and therefore, if it wasn't legit, it would never appear on the
Well, if you want to believe that, that's fine. I don't believe that. We do have a deliberative on Monday. It was yesterday, in this case, because Monday was a holiday. It would still take hours in our deliberative meeting. I mean, if that's what mayor and council would like to do, use the deliberative meeting to go through each and one of these items, I'll be more than happy to spend the time to do it. Is that what we want to do, gang?
If that's what you need, you should say that at deliberative, and we would.
I've said it today. So the next deliberative meeting, we will go through each line item. So in the future, we will be having some very long deliberative meetings. Bring the receipts.
Mr. Roots, Councilman Roots, if you would like to go through them line by line, we have a finance department.
I'm not saying I want to go through them line by line. I really don't want to go through them line by line. I would like somebody in the finance department to verify that.
I did not interrupt you.
It is not my job to go through these.
I did not interrupt you.
Well, let me finish then. I don't want to go through these line by line.
I was making a statement.
I'm correcting you. You told me I want to go through these line by line. I do not want to go through these line by line.
I said if. I said if you would like to go through these line by line.
And I don't.
We have a finance department.
That's what I've been asking for.
Then go to the finance department.
I've sent you the letter last week. I said if the finance department will send me a letter to say this is verified,
Then go to the finance department, Councilman.
That's what the letter was for, sir.
Wasn't for me. I'm not the one. You don't send letters to me and tell me.
Fine. So that's what's going to happen.
Okay, so that answers the no again. So next, so next time.
Who do I tell? I sent the letter to the whole group.
And you got the letter. And you sent it. No, I didn't get a letter. I got an email. And you sent, no, I didn't get a letter. I got an email.
An email is a letter?
I got an email.
You got documentation. Come on, dude. I will put it on a letterhead now.
If you want to go, if you want to, if you want to go line by line, you can go.
I don't want to go line by line. I want someone in the finance department, the receiver or director of finance to go line by line.
If you came to work, maybe you could take the time to go through them.
Well...
Thank you, Ms....
Our next deliberative, we will be going through it line by line.
You will be going through. Thank you, Ms....
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman, no, you have anything?
I'm fine.
Um, I have something. I'll just say, some people want it, want to make it happen. Others wish it would happen. And then there's others that make it happen. We all have a very, very timely, busy schedule. And when something's important to us, and when something is very, something's been a thorn in our side and we want to bring it to the forefront, I'm sure this council, anybody on this council, mayor council, has the opportunity to do so. And I've said it once before, if not second or countless times, that I'm an individual, and I think other members here on this council are individuals who have an open-door policy. And most certainly, we can be asked any types of question and we'll be able to provide any types of response if necessary. So if there's a question about finances or the expenditure report, most cer- most certainly, it can be asked. And I'm sure we'll be, get a, get a response. I have never received email prior to last week's or two weeks ago's email in regards to anything on the expenditure list outside of the normal forms of business that we have here in deliberatives. So no letter, no email, no phone call, anything in particular. If another member in the finance team has received anything, I wasn't copied on that letter and or email, so I'm not fully aware of it. But if they were, I'm sure that they'll be able to provide information on that. As Councilman Roots has stated, the expenditure list really doesn't change much on a week-to-by-weekly basis or a month-to-month basis. Many of the things that we do here in the city of Chester, that we're paying for in the city of Chester, are really vital, vital services and needs that has to get, that has to happen. JP Mascow, we have to pay for our trash. Delaware County Solid Waste, we have to pay for our trash to be disposed. Pico Energy, the Chester Water Authority, payroll, many of those things. Now, when there are odd things on there for events, then that happens as well. We have a grant program, the Amachi Program, who we pay out certain vendors and services for so that they can be able to sustain those events for the pro- for the program and for the public, for the youth here in the city of Chester. So those are some of the odd things. I don't believe, no, I know when we have these deliberative meetings, we won't sit here for hours. It is a six pages, but majority of the six pages, probably 80 to 90% of it, are regular monthly expenses. And Councilman had mentioned particularly about, I think, Delaware County Solid Waste. If that question has ever came to me, I would have told him Delaware County Solid Waste is a monthly bill. We pay it once a month. The tonnage amount comes in. So a fluctuate is not a fixed amount. It's a variable amount. But that question has never came to me. But now he has that. And if you have any other questions pertaining to that bill or any others, you most certainly can come to me or the accounts payable. If the public has any questions regarding that invoice or any others, you most certainly can come to me or accounts payable. So I just want to make that out to say, some people make it happen. I know I'm an individual. I don't make what happen. So when I get the expenditure report or any other resolutions or ordinances that are put forth in here or if things change over the week or over the hours, most certainly, I'm gonna make sure I do what I have to do to, to come to council and either voice my concern or opinion or try to bring it to the forefront on why I'm not approving or why I think I should approve. So that's all I have to say. I don't have any other events or things to speak out on.
Thank you, Councilman Roots.
I just think it's important to prioritize and scrutinize every dollar that's spent. And if the public does have a question, the public would have to receive the expenditure list. Are we willing to do that so they can see it and go through it themselves and ask questions? And the person that I did ask the question to at the time was our CFO. And I thought that was the person to start with. Her response to me was that when she filtered that information down to the finance department, she never got a reply.
Interesting.
Well, it's the truth. Whether it's interesting or not, that's who I requested the information from.
It was interesting. You just didn't get it.
I don't get a lot of things.
Councilman West?
I have nothing to say. I'm annoyed at people standing at council meetings.
Come on, I'm, I'm allowed. You just walked in, so we're, there's a... No, 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 over there. Yes, and you have to, we have a three-minute limit. Give your name.
Uh, my name is Melissa Thustill. Good morning to everybody.
Good morning.
I have a problem, a serious problem. So you said three minutes. I'm just trying to hit it like that, that is, and I'm done with it. I, I came and tried to do the right thing, but there's no way, when you come here and people speak to you like nothing. We put them in the office and I'm not going to tolerate no disrespect, that is, you know me. I don't disrespect. But when they come ghetto, so, you know, I can go ghetto too, but I don't do that because I'm a lady. What I don't like, they keep passing the buck on you, on you. This ain't about you. It's about the sock game, Stacey. So this man gotta live here with the water up to here. Every time it rained, they did it. They covered the drain. So I've been trying to get with you for the last three weeks. Everybody keep passing the buck. I threw my clothes on so fast to get over here because they said it was a beach and so I ran. I'm not gonna let them pass that buck on you because it's damage. They did the damage. An animal don't gotta live like that because I'm just gonna, I would tax the air too.
What's the problem? What is the problem?
102 Edward Street. And that lady on the second floor, that is, I have to address it. I don't know if y'all trained her right, but guess what? Tom and Curtis is free in life. It's right.
Which lady?
Oh, I'm about to tell you about her, Patricia.
Was this downstairs or...
Oh, second floor, babe.
Second floor, in here?
She's not gonna talk to me like that, that is. Oh, yeah, she was very angry. Her supervisor came. I, I, I went on top of her. I went for Kevin Collins. He was okay, dad. I'm not gonna yell. He's fine. A baby, Tom and Curtis go a long way in life. So you allow people to talk to you and dress you that way? She's gonna do it. She been doing this for a while. She just ain't started this, that is. She just ain't started. This man, every time it rained, this water up to here. They keep trying to pass the buck, so I, I defend you because I defend you. It's not a city problem. It's their problem.
It's 102 Edward Street?
Oh, God, that is, please, you gotta come. It don't make sense. Animals, dogs don't live like that. They, they don't.
Sorry, is, is this in the house or in the residency or a bit?
It's a residence. It's a house right here. You know, they doing the parking lot down near there. They done ran on this man's property. See, see, here, little, I think the thing I was about to call my doctor. They ran over this man's property. Never fixed it. They covered the drain up. You got the water company down there now. I'm not gonna let them put that on the city because guess what, that is, they did it. They did that. I was there. We have pictures. We have everything.
If it's, if it's, if it's 102, 102 Edward Street, let, let us take our engineer and our folks down there and investigate.
God bless you.
What's the gentleman's name, you know?
Richard Fontaine. But you gotta deal with that one downstairs because somebody gonna get her one day, dad. Somebody gonna get her. Oh, boy, she, it's hell. Excuse me, man. She ghetto's hell. She, that is, I got you. You know how I am. I walked away and I'm proud of myself. Because she brought the nasty out of me. You don't talk to people like that. We human beings.
Let, let me, let us have...
Oh, you're gonna get her, dad. Because I know she's been written, uh, written up a whole lot of time on you. Thank you, baby. That's all right.
You're welcome.
Can I address that? Uh, I just spoke with Ms. Thustill this morning. Hey, nice, nice to finally meet you. L and I will be on the scene this afternoon. The matter just came to my attention a few days ago and I immediately started helping. So, yes, and I talked to, yeah, addressed her. And I will be speaking to Mr. Fontaine on location later on this afternoon. Well, we gotta check it out. So I don't, I don't know yet. I haven't gone through the scene. I'll keep you posted. We've been speaking.
Thank you, Ms. Con.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I was gonna make a few comments, but I'll save it for next week. Yeah, you're good. You're good. Uh, we're gonna go into executive session. This meeting is now adjourned.